Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. We start out with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, then we'll consider the agenda for April 19th, 2017. Any additions, deletions, corrections, or moving anything around? One thing that has been brought up is under, um, new business, 10A, the John Sudbeck project is to be removed because there is no council action that needs to be done on that. It went through planning and zoning with no variance needed, so nothing has to be done with council at this time. So we can remove that off.
One thing can I just mention real quick on that, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I will be preparing a formal opinion in regards to whether or not a variance is needed for the project. Expect that I will have that written opinion out to the council within a week.
Okay. With that, I have nothing else. Does anybody have anything else? Not a look for a motion to approve with the amendment?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment.
Motion made by Sean, seconded by Chad to approve the agenda for April 19th, 2017
with the amendment of removing 10A. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. And we move on to comments, updates, and concerns. And we start out with citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments tonight? Phil?
Mr. Mayor and council, even though the item on the new business has been pulled from tonight's agenda, I did email the city attorney, the city's engineer, and the city council, and the mayor. My strong concerns, which I expressed last week at the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, I have copy, printed copies of what I emailed to you so that you have that information for one of the first times, not the only times in my life, I'll keep it less than two minutes. But for a variety of reasons, I have some serious concerns about the proposed location for the business. I don't need to get into that tonight. I would encourage the council, the EDA, Planning and Zoning, the Planning Commission to look at that as part of the deliberations over the proposed new business. I support John Sudbeck's effort to bring a new business to Gaylord. I am very pleased and excited about that. I think it's a great thing. But I don't believe that the location is current, is consistent with the city's current zoning policy, nor is it consistent with the future development that would promote an attractive east Gaylord gateway. So I'll leave it at that. And I have handouts for anybody else who would like to have a copy tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Any other citizen comments? Okay, then we move on to council. Anything from council?
Maybe Justin can talk about it later, or touch on it. But our park board meeting, I believe, being arranged that the trail go forward with applying for the grant for the north half of the trail with the 10th Street project. With that being completed, I think Margie has talked to her city engineer and whatnot. If Justin has anything else, he can touch on that later.
Okay. I have nothing there either, so then we'll move on to consent agenda. Time to review and consent agenda there again. Do we have any deletions, additions, moving anything around, or corrections? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve as presented. Motion made by Jessica, seconded by Sean to approve consent agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. We do not have any public hearings tonight. So then we move on to communication requests and petitions. That's in your packet. Is there any highlights, Kim, that you want to give us on that grant process, or?
It was basically for information for the council, so I don't have any additions or anything to add to that at this time.
Any questions from council? What was put into your packet? Okay, then we move on to number eight, Department and Committee Reports and Recommended Action Items. There we got a quarterly budget report with Lori Walz, our finance person.
Good evening. I just want to say that the expenditure guideline that I had given to or put into the packet, at that time when I did it, I had created a budget report and I had a percent on the budget column. This included a percent column on the far right side. Basically, please ignore that column because I found out after talking with our software company that when I'm trying to summarize it, I can't do a percent. So I apologize for that. Does anybody have any questions on this report at all, or any concerns? Right now, the general fund is sitting at like 14.4 percent at the quarters. There were nothing seen, I reviewed it this afternoon, and nothing really seemed out of line.
Anything jumping out?
No. So, any concerns otherwise?
Any questions, council?
Thanks, Lori.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. And we move on to unfinished business, and then we could go with 9A1, Presentation of Feasibility Report, 2017 Northwest Sanitary Sewer Report. Justin?
Good evening.
And Brett.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council. Whether it's fortunate or unfortunate, you probably won't be hearing me talk a lot tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Brent here in a minute. I introduced Brent a couple of meetings ago. Brent is a professional engineer with us that has an extensive background with trenchless technologies, repairing pipes underground with little or no excavation. So Brent did a lot of heavy lifting as far as report preparation here, just because of his background on the projects. I'm going to turn it over to Brent and let him present the report and our recommendations.
All right. I'll try and keep it short. I'm kind of long-winded sometimes, so bear with me here a little bit. We'll just kind of start off with the reports that you have in front of you. We all know kind of the issues, the main issues that kind of triggered the request for the reports. And so mainly, it's the basement backups that occurred mid late last year. Some of the backups occurred due to INI issues that we found in the pipe. INI is inflow of storm water or clear water into the system that creates an overflow backup issue throughout the pipe system. Other things that contribute to that are items, if you refer, you can refer to figure number three, kind of depicts really what we've seen in most of the pipe segments that we're looking at in this area. Things such as root intrusion, mismatched pipe joints, low service and flat service issues, broken pipe sections, and there's also quite a few INI issues where water is dripping in, leaking in, and running in. So I think figure three really represents the area that we looked at very, very well, gives a wide variety of the issues that we have in this area. As you can see in this figure as well, is there's a majority, or about approximately half of the piping is PVC, which is in generally reasonable condition with some small sags. The section in green is clay pipe, which is generally three-foot sections with joints in them. That is where the majority of our issues are right now. The section on the east side is where a lot of the backups occur due to multiple issues, INI and roots and mismatched joints and offset joints, kind of limiting the flow of the wastewater through the pipe system, backing up future, or the system upstream. Additional to that is multiple manholes also have INI issues and a lot of incrustation on those manholes is a general indicator of that type of INI. And visually, those manholes are all block structures and brick towards the top, which is, has a high probability of letting water in. So that, those are kind of the issues that we have identified in the report. And so that brings us to kind of the next, the next section is, what are we going to do about those issues? And what are, what are the, kind of the best, best ways to solve these issues without, with creating the least amount of disturbance as possible? So that's kind of where the trenchless technologies fall into play here. We talked about infiltration inflow, manhole and pipe deficiencies, and so forth. So some of the trenchless technologies that I kind of want to just talk about again, I know we talked about it a little bit at the last meeting, cured and placed pipelining, which is one of our options. You can refer to figure number one, which also talks, shows our rehabilitation and replacement options, what we are proposing to do for this section. The orange line is the cured and placed pipelining sections. As I kind of talked about before, the cured and placed pipelining is basically inserting a pipeliner into the existing pipe and creating a new pipe within a pipe, basically. It's considered a rehabilitation option. We're not replacing the existing pipe. We're leaving it in place and just lining the inside of the existing pipe. There is multiple things within the report that kind of go along with that. There's some INI short liners, short liners, which is like a four-foot section of liner that we'd use to, we'd put in first before putting the main liner in to help stop the INI at pipe joints and service locations. And then also putting in, they're called top hats, which is a CIPP liner that, that lines the service that comes into the main line. So a lot of the issues are at service locations where water is coming through at the service connection. So this would, would help stop that water from coming in at the service location. The next thing I want to talk about a little bit is the pipe bursting option. There is one section of the system that is, has multiple joint offsets, which we cannot line. There's a, there's a limit to what you can and cannot line. That section of pipe is in so much dismay that it really can't line it without creating the same issues that we already have of the mismatched joints and so forth. So we looked at a couple of options, and we believe the best option for this is pipe bursting. What pipe bursting is, is replacing the existing pipe with a new pipe, but bursting the old pipe. So you send a machine down through the pipe, and it's a chain of, of sections of machine that pull the new pipe into the place of the old pipe while bursting the old pipe. So we replace it with a 10-inch HDP pipe, which would be a solid, consistent run, all welded together, hoping to eliminate most of the sags in that section, but also creating a watertight pipe in that area. So there's one section of pipe bursting for that. There's also a small section, the magenta color, of pipe replacement. It is so close to the manhole, there's an offset joint there that we're, we believe that the best option for that is just to open cut and replace that small section of pipe on Penn Avenue. Now, the lighter blue color, that, those sections are mostly PVC, small sags in that area. Generally, there's, there's no INI, there's no root intrusion, no cracks. That, that pipe is generally in pretty good condition. What we're recommending for that section is to implement a, just a regular cleaning schedule. After time, those sags could accumulate deposits and that type of material in there. A regular cleaning, a regular cleaning schedule would, would lessen those deposits over time. So keep that pipe clean, keep the flow continuously moving through that pipe will help that section function correctly. So that's our recommendation for the PVC. We really don't plan on doing much with that. Now, for the manholes, our recommendation would be to, since most of the manholes are block-type structure manholes, they're, they're, they're built in the field, they're not precast from the, from the manufacturer. A lot of INI comes through those mortar cracks and infiltrates through the manhole that way. What we're recommending for, for the manholes in this section is to epoxy coat or line the manholes to stop that INI from entering the system through those structures. Along with that is new castings to kind of, so concealed pickhole castings that don't have any pickholes visible so water can run in over the top. That type of casting also creates a lesser, lessened INI issue. And then sealing the manhole rings with a, with a manhole, with a ring seal. So those are generally the areas that we, that we talked about. In the report is table two with a summarization of our recommendations for each section, which I previously described. We talked about the sanitary sewer structures. We have determined that manhole 23 on Oxford Avenue, just north of the church, will need to be replaced. It's in really rough shape. We talked to Ty a little bit and, and visually inspected it, and it, if we do the open cut for the pipe bursting, we don't believe that manhole is going to stand up to, to no, basically, you open cut next to it, you leave it open, there's a chance that manhole is going to collapse and fall in on that open trench. So to get away from that, we're recommending to replace that manhole while we do the, the pipe bursting section. That hole is going to be open already. I talked a little bit about sanitary sewer services. This report, this project would not cover any, any of the sanitary sewer services, but we do recommend implementing a, a house inspection program to identify any outside intrusion, sump pump connections, drain tile connections, roof drain connections, that sort of stuff. Also, it can identify any leaky toilets, any leaky faucets, that sort of stuff, and root intrusion, INI, similar to what we did in the televising report. And that would be kind of considered a separate project, a future project maybe. So we do talk about that a little bit in the, in the report. So that kind of summarizes what our recommendations are in general for, for the project itself. Now, on to assessments, the assessment portion of the project. We met with city, with staff here and discussed this in quite detail. And what we've determined is that the CIPP lining, the cleaning, all that stuff is rehabilitation and maintenance. We believe that that rehabilitation and maintenance cannot be assessed. It'd be paid for out of city funds. However, the pipe bursting section is an actual pipe replacement. We're putting in a new pipe. That can be assessed. Unfortunately, that is only assessed to one property, which is the church. And that assessment, if you look in appendix B, equates to about $25,000 in project cost. And that includes everything easements, or administrative, engineering, physical, and legal costs for that. So as for the assessments, most of the project would be part of the city funded. $25,000 of that would be, could possibly be assessed to the church property. Estimated costs, I'll get in that a little bit here, and then, and Justin will kind of tap into that as well. We are estimating the project cost approximately $373,000. Now, with that being said, I know we initially set up a project, project budget of about $300,000, so that we're $73,000 over that budget. One of the options that we have is to reduce our, this project down and include it in 2018 project. One of the options would be to exclude a section that we're going to CIPP line and include that in that 2018 project. We could reduce the project by $86,000, which would get us under the $300,000. Or we could do what Justin's going to talk about a little bit here and work through that. Right. So.
So when George Eilertson first visited with me about this potential project, he asked for a ballpark estimate, and this before we had any televising done, and we had projected about $300,000. And as Brent said, we're coming in a little bit above that. So he outlined some options to, to cut back the project. All of the work is needed to be done. One of the questions I asked George Eilertson, is there a way we could do a reimbursement resolution? The city has done this before. Knowing that we're going to bond for a larger project in about a year, the city could do a reimbursement resolution. And when you do the bond next year for the 10th Street project, reimburse yourself as part of that bond for anything over the $300,000 amount. That way, you're not pulling funds from the general reserve. You're still doing everything that needs to be done as part of the 2017 project, and then you simply bond for it in 2018 as part of that project. So that's an option that's available to the council for consideration, and we can have George talk more about that, too.
I have one question real quick. The, the block with the pipe bursting, does the church service come out to, to that eight-inch pipe, or does it head south to the 12-inch?
It, it does come off of that, that pipe there. So included in the assessment cost is 100% of the, the service replacement. And I believe that's in the back section. I believe that's approximately $9,000 to remove the concrete, replace the concrete, dig down to the, to the pipe burst section, reconnect, everything.
That would be part of the project.
That'd be part of the project, correct. But assessed 100% to the, to the church. So with most of that being said, there's a cost estimate back. You can look at that in the, in the appendix of the report. We identified the street cost and split out the sanitary sewer costs. So you can visualize how that's all put together. We include the manhole lining in there as well. The project financing, this is just a real rough estimate of what, what we would be looking at, approximately 7%, at $25,000, approximately 7% of the project cost. And that'd be financed through the assessments. Probably use the sanitary sewer fund and the general tax levy for the remainder of the project. These are just percentages that add up to 100%. So however you decide to work with that. The construction timeline, project schedule, the next kind of steps of the process would be the public hearing. And I believe that is set for the 17th, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. At 7:00 PM. We, and then the remainder, we'd present final plans and specifications, add for bids, open bids, and then, and then get into the actual project itself with construction beginning this, this summer here. So that kind of covers the construction timeline and then the end of the report there. And we feel this is probably the best scenario, the most cost-effective scenario, and the least destructive scenario for this area. We, working in trenchless technologies, a lot of the cities are, are moving towards this type of, of lining, of rehabilitation. We're working for a city currently that's doing almost all the city. It's a very economical way of getting a new pipe, basically, for a lesser cost than open cutting. So that kind of concludes the report in itself and kind of our recommendations. And are there any questions? I'm sure there's a few.
So you, your only recommendation for potential inflow from, you know, the residence lines is going in home inspections. So we didn't really just uncover any of that through this process due to other, is, I mean, certainly this needs to be done, no questions about that, but it doesn't fix any of that that's potentially out there. And then what would be your recommendations? I mean, going to home, home to home is one thing, but if people have tile lines in their house or around their house that's routed to a sanitary sewer, you're not going to see that clearly from the inside. So I, would we be photographing again after this is completed to where we could maybe look for some of that, or any recommendations on that?
Yeah. So the best way to, to visualize that, those service issues is to actually televise either from the main line into the house, or from the house to the main line. Now, and that's kind of the program that we'd have to look at implementing is, is covering sections of blocks and doing that program, you know, just over, you can do it over a period of time, so it's not considered a project or anything. But that would help identify which services are causing some of the, some of the back, or the extra flow. That when we, when we televise this, and if, when you look at the reports, you can see some of the services have consistent clear water coming into the main line. And like I said, that could be leaky faucets, it could be drain tiles running in. What that televising report or video will show is, it'll show service taps into the service line that could, that shouldn't be there, you know, so.
So what you need to do is use a smaller camera?
Yep.
And you actually have to make an appointment with each homeowner, go into their basement, and stick that camera down through either to clean out the basement, or you move the downstairs stool. And just as Brent described, you're looking for that foundation drain coming in. Now, if you find that, the only way to fix it is to dig down, disconnect that, and put it into a sump basket, and that homeowner has a sump pump that pumps it out. That's always the only way you can find those connections, is you have to go house by house by house, and it's a laborious process. You need to make those appointments to the homeowners. And, but that would be a next step, and that's something that Brent had recommended in the report as a next step. As far as a silver bullet catch basin that's connected directly to the sanitary sewer, we didn't find that. But we did find a lot of what Brent described as runners, where the camera's going long and the water's running into the pipe. When they did the televising, it wasn't raining, it was dry. When they did the televising, it wasn't raining, it was dry. So we can only imagine when we get a dose of rain, those areas that are running when it dries are going to be gushing when it's raining. And that's indication of some problems.
But when you find the, if you find, if you, if you implement a project and phase it and whatever, you, you find some of these places that you're putting the burden on each individual homeowner than to spend a few thousand dollars, a couple thousand dollars at least to probably put in an external sump pump, which is less than ideal. Get power out there, right? Also, I mean, you know, that's another thing too.
That's the next step of the process and Chad's right, that burden typically goes on to the homeowner. And I, I do work with some communities that have a program where they provide some assistance, a certain dollar amount to make those types of improvements. That's specific to each community. But there is definitely a cost and, and you're right, it's, it's probably a few thousand dollars to go down and put in that sump basket and, and rebuild. But that can be a pretty significant contributor to those foundation drains. And unfortunately, a lot of the job might be done.
Yeah, exactly. We know that there's something, there, there's some sort of issue coming from those certain services, but we don't know exactly what it is.
But you have those services narrowed down to, so you get it to a property specific?
Yep, we can, we can label those services right now and, and figure out which exact service is creating additional flow to the system that probably shouldn't be, so.
It's good information to have.
Yes, yep.
There was an issue last week also. Were you aware?
I was not.
Did you?
Yeah. There was a chunk left over when they checked and must have jilled. That little section that needs to be replaced on, on cam must have got stuck in that, between the PVC and the pipe. It's been going down there and cheddar and plus for that.
Okay.
But we've been checking it, never bothered the other day since. We're assuming it was just a chunk of wattle paper or whatever.
Now, you identified two services that are below minimum grade. Were any of the other ones checked?
No. We checked the two services that had basement backups. There could be others, but we started with those two because we wanted to see if that was in fact a potential for applying frequent basement backups. And we included some schematics in the report, or Brent did, based on some survey elevations. And you can see, this is the main line pipe, this is the basement floor. We tried to draw a line vertically across to show that even when the pipe is just at capacity, it's not overall capacity, just at capacity, it's just below the basement floor. So it's turning the backup in that service. So the tolerance here as far as even if the system is just working as it should at capacity is, is very close or very tight. And one thing that Brent and I talked about is, is if these basements were even a foot, a foot and a half lower, they wouldn't have required a drainage pump. They're, they're that close, it would have required some kind of pump station. So they're right at the, the cutting edge where gravity is, is just working. But if they were just even a little bit lower, it would have required a drainage pump. And I guess one thing, when you're talking about these flatter grades, the reason Brent is recommending a cleaning program is if it is flatter, whether it's a service line or main line, the solids tend to get stuck or hung up in the pipe. So I'll be cleaning all of that and it'll help keep those solids through and provide a, a little bit more capacity.
One, one other thing that, I, the $25,000 assessment, I'm kind of, kind of thinking the council might hear about that. From the church, obviously, but, you know, we're going to have to defend what we're, if we go ahead with this, cured in place pipeline or, I'm not sure by specs of that, does that stand alone pipe if the rest breaks away?
To a point, you know.
We're going to do all these blocks and it, it just feels like we're splitting hairs, you know. I, I guess what kind of jumps out at me, which will make our financial situation worse, of course. But, you know, something that seems more in the ballpark would be having them pay for the, the service work, you know? That would just, I, I just, I don't know how, how we're going to tell them. We're basically going to put all pipes in the ground, one form or fashion, you know, as far as they're going to be concerned. I don't know.
What's the difference when we get new streets and we get new?
Well, they're not getting new street, they're going to get, they're going to get with another assessment.
They're going to get one pipe.
Exactly.
You know, in, in the next 15 years, what kind of assessment are they, they might be looking at on the roadway? And will we be able to?
Do the pipes though, right?
Well, the, this is a little different situation than anything we've dealt with on past projects. All of the past projects, pipes have been in the street. These pipes are in the alleyway. So when we reconstruct the streets in this neighborhood, the, there will be no pipe work, limited pipe work because the water and sewer are both in the alley. The water main is right next to the sanitary sewer in these streets.
But they can be assessed again within 20 years?
They could be assessed for the street improvements.
Right.
So they would, per the city policy, there's different categories for the different types of improvements. And when the street reconstruction occurs in these neighborhoods, they would be assessed for the street reconstruction.
But whereas in the other parts of Bay, was it, weren't they in the street?
They were in the street and the pipes were completely replaced with new pipes.
So then we were assessed for the pipes and the streets, which had separate lines?
That's correct.
Which I remember specifically.
Yes.
So they're going to be getting assessed for the pipes because they're getting new pipes in that alley.
They're, we're not installing new pipes in the alleyway, we're aligning the pipes in the alleyway.
No.
I guess it's, it's up for some, some discussion if the council wants to discuss what options might be available. From what we've seen with other communities, they typically have not assessed for lining pipes. If it's a new pipe, they assess for a new pipe. That's what we've seen in the past.
What would the price difference be to put in a new pipe there compared to just lining that one?
The problem is, we don't know if, if it's even feasible, quite frankly, because of some of the utilities that are underway. There's electrical, telephone and a cable in the alleyway over the top of these pipes. So all of those utilities are within a 16 and a half or 20 foot easement, alley easement.
And that'd be for open cutting that alleyway.
So you have to relocate those and then we'd have to trench in a 20 foot wide area. In, in some of these areas, we've got garages and trees that are very close to the alleyway, which would make it difficult to dig.
Not a possibility or very expensive.
It'd be very expensive.
Yeah, it would be.
That isn't the case in the church though. That's wide open.
That's wide open, it is. So we did look at the option of open cutting that. The church parking lot and the drive entrances are both concrete surfacing. So the cost of replacing the concrete surfacing, it's about 20, 21 feet wide. It's a full, it's a full block because it comes from both sides. That cost was a little bit more than, which is why we recommended the pipe burst.
What's the assessment rate on the, the church property? Is that one unit or is it 1.2? I, I don't know where the church falls on which category, but.
We used one unit.
But so you come along, the city 10, 15 years from now gets around, within the next 20 hopefully, gets, gets around to doing all four streets around that church. It's a quarter, let's just say 1.25 then for each street segment with all that frontage that they have there or? It's such a...
It's a lot, it's a unique.
It, it's a unique situation and, and believe me, we wrestle with this quite a bit and how to address it. We want to make the correct recommendations to fix it properly. We don't want to have, like Brent said, lining a pipe that we shouldn't be lining.
Well, to me, the real question is, this is definitely a step in the right direction and it needs to be done. Is it going to quit, keep the inflow of sewage into people's basements? It's going to help, but we still don't know that answer because there's still other inflow. We do have the grade situation there, which is also a contributor to that. So, you know, we have another 100 year rain next year, which is every three years now. It's not going to necessarily stop the same problem.
This, and I think we talked a little bit about this last time or the last meeting. This is step one of probably a couple of step process, is addressing these lines in the problem area. Then the next step would be to address the storm sewer issues. We've got too much surplus water getting back off the streets and into the pipes into the lake. And then we did televise, or the council authorized televising the whole south end. I don't have my map open here, but the area south of Nicklet. We haven't looked at a lot of those lines. You looked at a few of them Brent, but you're seeing a lot of the same issues?
Yes, yes, there's about 50% of those lines south of this area. It's the same type of pipe as the, the clay pipe. So I've reviewed the, the report that, that Empire put together. And a lot of the same issues and some of them even worse than we've seen in this section. So there are some, some real rough areas further south that could be contributing to that, to those INI backup, or those, those flow backups that are occurring further north upstream, so.
So we could be looking at a lining project close to the same size as this, potentially? I mean, with further review, we have to come on that south side.
Then that would probably be the third leg of the stool, is lining the rest of the pipes in this, in this neighborhood, in this area.
I think the city's put its bet foot forward in looking at this and taking the steps. So I, I don't think we have any worry for residents that we're not doing our part to help this at this point. And with the 10th Street project and opening up water going to the lake is going to help a bunch too. And we have to move forward and that's... So I guess.
So tonight would be the resolution?
Right. The next thing we'd have to look at is resolution, what do we got? Resolution 2017 dash seven, which is for the public hearing to be held on May 17th. 2017 at 7:00 PM. That's what that resolution consists of moving forward.
If we're going to, I don't know if the council want to discuss it or not, but for that, back to the assessment, you hold a public hearing first and all that. At what point is the right time to, if, if adjustment is made? Because from, from this point forward, they're, you're going to get a letter that says $25,000?
That's correct. So what would happen is if the council takes the step tonight to call for the public hearing, we'll send out notices to all of the property owners, even those where the assessment is $0. Just for informational purposes, so they can come to the meeting and find out what we're doing. But there will be one assessment that will be sent out with $25,000 that'll be sent to the church. So if, if, to answer your question Chad, I guess if there's a desire to do something different, maybe you could have that discussion now.
Well, I know when I heard it and it's a church getting nailed for $25,000, I had repercussions on it myself, so I...
I'm not prepared to sit up here to defend, you know, we're going to get asked about this. And I, I honestly think what's fair is them paying for that service cost, in my mind, which hurts us. But we're, we're already talking about borrowing from next year's bond anyway.
Right.
I, I don't know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to sit here and defend them getting nailed for $25,000 for essentially getting close to the same thing everybody else is getting.
Mm-hmm.
But we'll have a tough time defending that, I think.
They're going to say, what's wrong with my sewer? We haven't had any problems.
Well, you're going to hear that story.
Oh, you know, and even after we do this, we'll have a 100 year reign and there'll be backup. And we'll hear, why did you spend that money and it didn't do anything, so.
That would be my suggestion. Assess them for the cost of the, the 9K, what you guys had estimated for that. That, that would be my suggestion because I, I don't know how we're, you're going to defend that to them.
Well, and you, and we can defend why were there, why nobody else is getting assessed, but it's a perception on that as well. You know, we're doing this, all of this work and only one person which, or one place which happens to be a church is getting assessed.
But they're getting, they're the only ones getting a new.
I understand, but it's still the perception. People aren't necessarily going to understand. All they're going to say is, nobody got assessed but American Lutheran Church. Wow.
Sure they didn't have a backup.
I could, I could.
Never said anything, I've never heard anything there.
Well, I mean, they don't have a basement.
That helps.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
I'm on the same page as Chad is, I think.
Well, I guess if we're changing that, we need that to be put into a motion to get a change at this point. So then we can move forward with the, still having the public hearing on May 17th. But we'd have to, to change the information. So I'd have to put into a motion and vote it on at this point.
What were your thoughts Jim? Were you just thinking that we just suck up the cost?
Yeah, I am. I mean, if we're, if we're willing to suck up for, you know, 16, why not suck up 25? You know, and I'm not saying that's right.
I know.
I, I'm, and I'm not saying it's right to charge them 9,000. What's right for the, everything is the 25,000, but I just, I mean, like I said, I don't know. I just don't know. This is a tough one.
Any decision we make here from this point forward will come and haunt us later, just so everybody knows. It will come and haunt us.
Yeah, I mean, so let's.
No matter if we divvy off to 25, if we drop it down to nine, if we drop it down to zero, any decision we make at this point is, we're not going to be favorable somewhere along the line.
But new pipe on the service, right?
Yes, the, the service would be.
New pipe and replace the concrete over.
Yep, exactly. And just to, you know, kind of touch on how the dollar amounts came to be for the, for that, for that church, you know, the sanitary sewer, that 13,000 is 25% of the sanitary sewer part. The, the sanitary service line, that 9,000 is 100% of the, the cost to replace that service. The street curb gutter at 3,000, or the 42, no, the 3,000 is 25% of the entire cost to redo that. So it, it follows the assessment policy on those dollar amounts, but it's actually more to do with the complete project, of course, but.
What do you think, Dan?
Well, I think that you should, I think the city is better off following its policy because if in the future you do a similar project and then it feels better to you because everybody's getting assessed the same, you're going to have to answer the question of, well, why did the church, when it qualifies under the policy, get an exception? So though, this is an anomaly that the project looks odd with people, most people not getting assessed. It's still in accordance with policy and cities run into much more trouble than they bargain for when they don't follow policies. So you don't, I don't think you have a lot to answer for because you're just following policy and that's what you're supposed to do. So the church may ask you, well, why are we getting assessed and no one else? And we can give them the explanation that we've, you know, just heard for the last half an hour.
Right, but I have a, if, if we could line that, if we could line that pipe, we'd be looking at 9,000. Or we wouldn't be, it would be zero.
It'd be zero if you lined the pot.
That, so really the two, the, the main difference here is the pipe bursting and the CIPP lining. That's what I, you know what I mean?
I mean, that's a legitimate decision. If you feel that lining is the best for the project.
Well, but you're, they're saying you, you don't recommend lining it. You're recommending bursting it. Because of bursting is why we have to replace this, which, you know, I, 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 I see where you're coming from Chad, I just.
I think we should stick with the policy and then if they have a hardship, they can always come to us. Because they are the ones that are getting like the nerve and everybody else is getting the worst. the worst.
Never go against the attorney.
Well, churches that have most blocks in our whole town, and we're gonna be, after whatever we do here, is gonna set precedents. And we're gonna be sitting here for hours.
I agree, you gotta follow policy, I, I'm just seeing if there is a difference, like I said, between the process that we're using on, on the rehab project, you know. Well, who, who's, who's defining, why, why is pipe bursting falling in that category? And why, why is pipe bursting not the same as, you know, essentially, I mean, I mean, we kind of touched on it, I get it, but I could, somebody could make the same argument that they're both new pipe.
They could, they want to be correct, at least under the analysis and the policies that we've determined.
Yeah, I, I, I hear that, I'm just.
It's a difficult decision.
So what I'm hearing right now is that we move forward the way it's been presented, and if there's anything that happens after the public hearing with a grievance, that we deal with the grievance at that point.
That would be the process. This isn't a final decision.
No.
You'll still be, the, the church will have an opportunity to come and comment, and you still have the opportunity after the public hearing to make adjustments, though we'll still wrestle with the same issues we've been wrestling with.
And we'll also have the assessment hearing, so, public hearing in May, and then we'll have an assessment hearing that's in the schedule, but that'll be a few months from now. So there'll be a couple opportunities to take a look at, at what to do. They're, they're both trenchless, but one is a new pipe.
Now, there is a procedure on assessments, so they want to appeal the assessment, or?
Yeah.
Maybe.
So that'd probably be my recommendation, that follow with Don, it's policy, let's follow policy, and if we have to deal with grievances and procedures through assessments after that, we'll deal with them at that time. So with that in, in mind, then we go back to a, a motion for resolution twenty seventeen dash seven to move ahead and have the public hearing on May seventeenth, twenty seventeen, at seven o'clock.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Tom, seconded by Sean, to approve resolution, or to move forward with resolution twenty seventeen dash seven, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Okay, then that brings us to the end of our open session at this point, so I would need a motion to close open session of our meeting, and to have a little recess for chambers to clear and open closed session.
So move.
Second. Motion ba, made by Jessica, seconded by Jim, to close open part of the meeting and move into, or, close open part of the meeting and move into closed session after chambers are cleared. All in favor signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. So we'll be moving into closed.